Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bonnie, would you call the roll, please?
Johnson?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Wheelock?
Yes ma'am.
Kropa?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Here.
This is our first opportunity for public comment. Bonnie, would you read the rules, please?
Any person shall be permitted to address the meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures: Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment will generally be received at any time during the meeting regarding a specific topic currently under discussion by the Board. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson.
Mr. Cooney, I understand you'd like to make public comment. If you'd please step forward.
And I want to thank the Chairwoman for calling me first. I'm actually supposed to be down at the Rotary Show in about 15 minutes, so... And I'm not going to pass up the opportunity to plug the show tonight through Saturday night. It's the 74th Annual Rotary Show, a real Traverse City tradition, and down at the State Theater. Shows start at 7:30, and for 15 bucks, you get a great show. You can watch your county prosecutor make a fool out of himself in the chorus. And all of your ticket sale money goes towards good works in the community, over $50,000 last year. So get on down there, get your tickets. So anyway, I've already taken up a lot of time. The other thing I'd like to ask Madam Chair is that you give me an extended time for comment, and the reasons are that...
Mr. Cooney, you take the time you need.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
And I think I say that because I think I represent the perspectives of the 11 employees that are affected by this decision on pensions tonight, anyway, as well as the 77 others that are in the defined benefit group. And of course, I manage employees, all of us whom are affected by the health care change. I want you to know that I do have a great deal of respect for the decisions that you have to make tonight. I think it's good that this Board is attempting to better define what our unfunded portion of our pension and health care liabilities are. And I also applaud you for attempting to find solutions to those problems. But that being said, I don't think that all of the solutions have to do with taking it out on the county employees. And my biggest concern here is that this is being rushed through. This was a study session originally on the calendar. Now it's become a vote on some pretty important issues. I don't think that the county has ever voted to require a non-voluntary reduction in pension benefits. I don't think that's ever happened. We know that there's supposed to be a blue ribbon committee report. I haven't seen the report. If it's gone out, maybe it went out today. I was at a prosecutor's conference in Gaylord and might have missed it. And we know that there's a MERS meeting in July that Mr. Menzel is attending, and that meeting is to determine whether we can increase the amortization period for the pension liability. And so it seems like we would at least be waiting to find out, are we going to level that term out? If we're able to meet our obligations this year, and I know we're not quite able to do that, but is there a reason to take drastic measures tonight? This proposal was announced just seven days ago to the employees. I knew about it maybe a few days before that. And since none of these changes take effect until January 1st, I'm just wondering what the rush is. I also want to make sure that you understand the impact on the employees affected, because to the 11 people that you're talking about tonight and potentially 77 others, it's a quadruple whammy. It's 10% of salary. I had to call MERS myself to figure out, are you talking about some percentage of a co-pay or a premium amount? No, we're talking about 10% of your salary. We're talking about more than a 50% reduction in pension benefits. I say more, even though it looks like 50%. If you look at the compounding interest on those benefits, it's clear that this is way more than 50%. I want you to know, because I had to ask, is there any opting out of this? Because when I talked to the MERS rep, I discussed, is this really a negative benefit? Because when I looked at the numbers, it was questionable whether this was any benefit at all. One thing is, you don't know that, because I don't know that, without some actuarial calculation, which is something that MERS could do. But what you should know is there's just no opting out of this, okay? Because that's probably what I would choose to do. On top of that, of course, for my family, it's about $1,500 increase in health insurance premiums. I pay the most now, 10%, and so altogether, that's, I think, about $2,700 or a bit more than that. And the worst of all is that it's a game changer. It's a game changer in that if you look at the numbers and you do the math, I think you'll understand why, over the next year, maybe two years, maybe it'll take three or five years, these 88 employees will probably be gone. And that's simple arithmetic if you sit down and do the pension numbers. And that's something I hope all of you have taken the time to try to figure out yourselves, because it took me a few days of hustling around and trying to figure out from MERS and other places, you know, what does this mean to me? I want to give you an example of my office manager, Kathy Paul, who's on that list of 11. Kathy's worked at the county for 25 years. She makes about $48,000. Of course, she didn't start out at $48,000. She probably started out less than $20,000 25 years ago. But she stuck with the county, probably in part because of her pension benefit. Reducing her salary gives her about $43,000 or a little more. The legal secretaries in my office, who she supervises, make about $40,000 a year. The legal secretaries receive up to a 9% contribution towards their retirement from the county. Kathy, on the other hand, will get the 1 and 1/4 multiplier. I'm sorry. The $43,000 is less than the victim's advocate or the child support coordinator in my office made. The office manager has always been the highest-paid staff member in my office. So in terms of just take-home pay, I'm wondering what's going to cause Kathy to work the hours that she does? And I'm the only one that sees this, because I see her there late just about every night. All the union employees check out right at 5 o'clock, as they should, because legally I got to pay them time and a half otherwise. But Kathy is there. And Kathy is there sometimes when we've had crisis periods, which happens too much, till 8, 9, 10 o'clock. I've seen her take work home on weekends and spend her weekends trying to take care I've seen her in the office late for weeks on end. I'd like to tell you, that's not going to happen if you make this change, but I know the kind of character that Kathy has. She's going to be there, because that's just how she's built. Apart from, I think, a basic inequity in this, my concern is that if 88 people leave, have you looked at whether that's going to increase our unfunded pension liability? Because when you don't have people paying into the plan, that increases our unfunded liability. I think everyone, in retrospect, believes that a hybrid plan would have been the best choice here. Say, a 1 and 1/2 multiplier with a 6% contribution, like the city went to. Shouldn't we look at a range of options? Co-pays? I agree with the administrator. Other counties where they have similar multipliers, those employees are paying a percentage of their income for that benefit. But as Mary Lenoir pointed out, that's usually 5% or 6%. It's not 10%. 10%, by the way, is the maximum MERS will allow you to have employee contribute. And of course, the 1 and 1/4 is much lower than the average multiplier that you see, according to Mary Lenoir's report. Actually, our multipliers are pretty much right in line with other counties or other municipalities in MERS. But when I read the report, what it indicated is, the difference is that we don't pay anything My point is, wouldn't you want to at least look at some other options to determine, can we make this more fair to these employees who, like Kathy, has spent 25 years with the county? We're pulling the rug out from under her. Whether you want to acknowledge it or not, that's what you're doing, because I'm sure she's passed up other opportunities along the way, and she certainly had nothing to do with creating whatever unfunded liability that we've got. She's not the one that decided we needed a new courthouse or a new health building. She just came to work every day and did her job, and she was told she was going to get this benefit. And if you want to say, well, we're not going to make the same mistakes that were made in the past, well, everything this county has done to try to lower its future liability, its legacy costs, has kind of backfired on us. And here we are rushing into a decision that affects at least those 11 people, maybe those 88 people very seriously, and may affect our unfunded liability, may make the situation What you need is a hook to try to keep those employees. You need to do something different, other than what's been recommended. Even Mary Lenoir's suggestion of a 2 and 1/2% contribution from the county and a 1 multiplier was better than the draconian proposal that's been put forth by the administration. I'm not sure it's the... I don't think it's a hook you need to try to keep those employees, because you do need them paying into the system rather than leaving, because when they leave, they start drawing those pension benefits. And I'm talking about leaving at their earliest out date. Of course, most of the people still on defined benefit are going to be pretty close to that. They can't have less than 16 years unless they're working in the circuit court. So anyway, finally, and I'm going to wrap up quick here, and I do appreciate you listening to me this long, but with the health care change, what I'm going to say is you have to do something to retain your employees. Because with the stagnant wages and the constant reductions in benefits, you're going to have to do something at some point. And I worry, I truly worry about my office, and I've got some young attorneys in there, and they keep seeing what's happening. And I know they've got to be looking at, you know, what's best for their families. We all do. So anyway, you know, you've got to do something to try to retain these employees. Thank you, and good luck with your decision, and make sure you get down to the Rotary Show. I know Mr. Menzel makes a guest appearance there every night, so.
Anyone else? Carol. Excuse me. We have a meeting underway, please, and we are going to respect everybody who comes to the podium. Thank you.
I have a handout if I could pass this out. Excuse me. I wanted to follow... Oh, Carol Stocking, 9662 Blackman Road, Kingsley. I'm sorry, my throat is really scratchy. I wanted to follow Bob, because I felt like much of what he said was, fits right in with my comments. Part of my comments were going to be about the defined benefit, but I'm going to not say that, because he said it so much better than I could have. But what I wanted to... What I've passed out and what I wanted to focus on, I feel speaks closely... Is closely aligned with what Bob was talking about. I don't know how many of you really know the makeup of the workforce, but here in Grand Traverse County, we have a number of people who make $14 an hour. And so what I've put together for you is a household budget based on a $14 an hour income. The annualized salary would be about $27,300. Taxes at 25%, which would be your federal, state, and your social security tax, which I think 25% is an accurate or reasonable rate. Excuse me, that takes the net salary down to $20,475. That's someone's take-home wages. Divide that amount by 12 months. That's what... That comes to that 1706 on the page, so that's someone's take-home pay monthly. Employees, in order to take advantage of the county's defined contribution, they have to put in 3% to get the county's match. So that 5119 is the county's 3%. I estimated housing, whether it be a mortgage or rent, at 700. I think that's unreasonable, but for the sake of this exercise, I put $700. A car payment at 300. That's certainly not a Rolls Royce. Utilities at 250 a month. That would include electric, gas, phone, TV. Again, I think that's pretty modest. I asked three of my staff members how many... How often they fill up their car and how much it costs them to fill up, and all three of them independently told me weekly, and it cost them about $37. So that's where I came up with $148 just to get to work. So your total expenses are $1449. Take the 1709 that you make after taxes and deduct those expenses. That leaves you with $257. You take the $245 health insurance co-pay that's being proposed, that leaves someone with $11.68 to buy groceries. These are real numbers.
Take the time you need, Carol.
It's very personal to me, because some of the people that live on this $14 an hour are right here in the audience looking at you people. And these are real figures that they have to live on. These are... They haven't even paid their automobile insurance. They haven't paid daycare. They haven't paid their homeowner's insurance. And God forbid, they have a medical emergency, because our co-pays are now something that have to come out of that amount, too. You are putting people in poverty by making this decision tonight. So I kind of want to mirror what Bob Cooney said. Don't rush this decision. We have time. We can do better than this. I really want you to look at these numbers, because these are real. And these are affecting real people, real employees, real families. These people have names. They have children. And this is really... This is really critical, this decision you're making tonight. And then on a side note, I want to also say that we see... We have Traffic Court on Tuesday afternoons in District Court. And if you want an education, you can come watch Tammy Rogers do Traffic Court. Last year, we had over 1,500 tickets come through the District Court for people who don't pay their insurance. These are the people who won't pay their insurance. They have a choice to buy groceries or pay their car insurance. They're not going to pay their car insurance, folks. So I'm just telling you that this is real life. So that's my one point. And then I know I'm off my three minutes, but I want to make one other point. And that is that the commentary has been, we need to cut, we need to cut, we need to cut, we need to save, save, save. But I want to tell you that since last... The middle of last summer, we have paid an HR consultant $63,000. She spent all winter in Florida. We've paid a labor attorney over almost $36,000... $36,000 to negotiate contracts. We paid Raymond Robson almost $12,000 to do a financial analysis and a budget analysis outside of the audit payments that we've made to them. We've paid Mary Lenoir almost $6,000 to present to us what we already knew. We have paid... We pay a public relations person $12,000 a year. And we've hired a deputy county administrator at 90,000-plus benefits. And that's certainly no slam to Jen. I like Jen very much. But my point is, if we're looking at saving money, why do we keep spending it? That's almost... That's over $220,000 that we've spent in less than a year on things that I'm not sure added much value to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Karen, please. I would ask the members of the audience to please hold your applause. If you continue to interrupt as speakers come forward, I'll close the meeting and we'll adjourn to another time. I just ask that you please respect everyone as they come forward. Thank you. Karen, please go ahead.
Karen Cooney, 7247 Henderson Drive. I'm deeply disturbed by the recent events involving the county and its problems, most specifically the spin that is being touted to anyone who will listen. I live with a man who has integrity and undeniable-worth ethic. In 1993, we moved to this county so that he could serve the public. He took a pay cut to do so, and we reconciled the lower pay with the availability of good benefits. A job that would end in eight hours a day and good health insurance? Who wouldn't want that as a family? That lasted for six, maybe seven years. This man is in the management group, not represented by any union. Over the years, the Boards have consistently used this group as the example, requiring them to pay higher percentages of their health care and making far fewer adjustments to income. No other group ever followed suit, not even the Commissioners, until a couple years ago. At that time, the Board agreed to pay the same higher percentages of the management group, but only until... Or only for a short time. In addition, this man's job required him to work from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., sometimes 9:00, sometimes 11:00. Weeknights and almost one, if not two, days every weekend. Providing a safe community for Grand Traverse residents is important to him. The job requires this amount of time, especially now with the influx and expansion of the area as a lucrative drug market. He has sacrificed time to better this community. He has missed award ceremonies, concerts, sporting events, and family gatherings so that he could do the job the right way and get it done. With a focus on drugs, he has potentially put himself and his family in danger. Listening to someone say that this man has never contributed to his retirement for years and years is extremely frustrating and insulting. I challenge you to find a man who has contributed more than Bob Cooney. As business owners, you understand that the more hours you put into your work translates into more income. In the county, it does not. More hours at the county translates into getting the work done. Yes, we understand that adjustments need to be made and changes have to happen in this county. But good business practice means being proactive and not reactive. It means studying options and the potential outcomes of those options. This change won't take effect until January 1st, 2017. There is time to explore options. I know you will vote tonight, and I know what the outcome will be. And what will this most amazing man that I live with do tomorrow? Tomorrow, he'll go to work, and he'll continue to do the work of the county. I only hope that tomorrow brings an environment that fosters respect and encourages discourse, because without these attributes, the best solutions will never rise to the surface. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Please.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Rogers. I'm the friend of the Court for Antrim and Grand Traverse in Lethalon County. I'm speaking tonight as the manager of folks in my office, and also, I'd like to think of myself as thinking... Speaking as a taxpayer in Grand Traverse County as well. I am urging you to defer a vote on what is before you this evening. The proposals to require 20% contribution to health insurance, as well as a contribution of 10% to MERS. And like Mr. Cooney, I, too, reviewed all of the agenda items, the memos, even the resolution that you have in front of you, and I could not figure out 10% of what. I, too, had to do considerable additional research to find out that what we were really talking about tonight is 10% of the employees' gross pay. Essentially, it's a 10% pay cut for all of those folks. This is a poorly drafted resolution, since it doesn't really even define that, but also, I think it's not well-conceived. There's not been a lot of discussion or research about this, and as with some other proposals that have come before this Board recently, it doesn't seem to be part of a comprehensive plan. Grand Traverse County, I don't believe, is broke. I think it continues to enjoy a double-A bond rating. In 2014, its expenditures were $2 million less than budgeted, and in 2015, the fund balance that was budgeted to be used was not used. We do have a pension liability, as do many government entities, and we know what the causes of that are. Ms. Lenoir's report pointed those out. We know that closing 12 to 14 defined benefit divisions in 2000 resulted in an obligation to MERS to accelerate funding. We know that early incentives that were offered for folks to retire early in 2000 resulted in the same thing, an accelerated funding obligation. That was done again in the year 2000 and 2005. We know all of those actions resulted in accelerated funding for the pensions. We know that MERS didn't meet its 8% return on investment projections. That is a contributing factor. We know that Grand Traverse County requested and received a three-year freeze on its accelerated amortization for the years 2009, 2010, and 2011. Knowing all of those things that accelerated the funding of the plan, the Board closed two more plans, the final two plans, the courts' plans, just this past year, in 2015. Again, that's another accelerated funding moment. So the employees were not involved in any of those things that were listed as the causes for this pension liability issue that we have. And yet, the proposal tonight is that the employees solve the problem. Every year... I've been here 19 years now. Every year, employees negotiated contracts. They negotiated contracts for wages and benefits and... Oops, sorry. And many times, there were concessions made. Wages were... There were cost-of-living adjustments that were not taken in order for employees to receive those 2.5 multipliers that are in those contracts that are now being proposed to be taken away. Employees negotiated their contracts, and then they got to work doing what they're supposed to do, which is performing their responsibilities and serving the public. They didn't monitor what was going on on the other side of the contract, and now we find that the county wasn't putting in the money that it needed to put into the pension. find that the county wasn't putting in the money that it needed to put into the pensions. So it's kind of the worst kind of egregious breach of contract that I can think of. And the proposal that the people who are not in default, care of the default, is sort of insulting, actually. And then to learn that the only other part of the plan is to go to MERS and ask for further extension on the funding of the plan, it just seems to me to compound the problem. I don't think that there's been a full exploration of other options that could be involved in the solving of these pension liabilities. There are many of our municipalities around here who still have defined benefit plans for their employees. There are jurisdictions, including Antrim County, where I work also, where employees are offered a hybrid plan, part defined contribution and part defined benefit. In fact, I think that MERS has maybe mentioned to the county before that having employees be involved in a hybrid plan of defined benefit and defined contribution would result in the county being able to extend its liability, shorten that accelerated amortization period. There are lots of options to explore here. Restoration of a defined benefit plan, albeit perhaps a less generous one with an employee contribution. Adoption of a hybrid plan. Certainly, looking at some things like borrowing or selling assets in order to at least chunk down a little bit the unfunded liability are solutions that should be explored. It doesn't appear to me that any of those have really been seriously considered when explored and researched. It appears that we've got one solution here. Make 88 employees contribute more money toward this plan and go and ask MERS for further extensions to fund the plan. That doesn't sound like a comprehensive plan to me. I would encourage you to take some time to study this issue, explore all of the options that might be available. You know, I think there's a lot of people in this room that probably have solutions that they could offer to some of these funding solutions. We've not been asked. I haven't been asked. There's a blue-ribbon panel, but what about the folks that actually work here, those of us who have departments? We might be able to help you solve some of these problems, but I, for one, have not been asked. I certainly would be willing to be part of those solutions and part of the exploration of some of these other options that might be available to you. So I would just encourage that. I don't think it's been thoroughly vetted. I think there's a lot more research and analysis that could be done here to come up with something that's much more comprehensive than what's being suggested this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment?
I am Jeremy Holgum, also with the friend of the court's office, live in Garfield Township. Just a couple of points because things have been stated so well already. But I would just point out when there are problems to be solved and decisions that need to be made, gathering information, never a bad thing. Gathering information is always a good thing. It's always going to result in a better decision. So I would implore you, as the others have who've come before me, to continue to gather information and not to hastily rush into a reactive decision. So it has been clear over the last couple of weeks that there's a perspective being presented by the administration to the community and to the employees that somehow employees have gotten away with not paying for any of their benefits for years and years. And I spoke at this commission just last month indicating that contracts, since I've been a part of the county's employment since 1997, have resulted in decreased wages with every signed contract. So it is true that employees have paid for their benefits through one contract after another, have sacrificed wages for benefits. And regardless of how the truth is spun, employee groups have repeatedly paid exactly what they were told they should pay by the administration and the commission, exactly. Never, ever have I negotiated a contract that we did not pay exactly what we were told we had to pay to maintain the benefit system that we had. Not once. Refusing any potential solution outright to openly gathering information could be perceived as lazy at best and blindly reactive at worst. And the other point, I guess I just want to make is a point that Mr. Cooney began hitting on and Ms. Rogers also hit on. It's not the employees who are in breach of contract. They're not the ones who created the unfunded liability by kicking the can down the road repeatedly. The administration and the commission did. And as big a problem as you currently have, as big a problem as we say this unfunded liability is, you're going to have a much bigger problem on your hands if you continue down this path. Decimating employees' wages will result in a very real catastrophic problem for Grand Traverse County residents, not just county employees, for Grand Traverse County residents, a problem much greater than the artificial emergency that has been created by closing the defined benefit system and increasingly escalating payments over the next 10 years. You have already seen the beginning of good people leaving and the challenge of finding good people to come here and work. That's already happening. In addition, you are going to be losing people who are able to have a historical perspective on their departments and the work that they do, on the service that's provided to county residents, a historical perspective that can't be provided by transient elected officials. These frontline people are the people who are here day in and day out and do the work. They're the ones who make sure the services that county residents have come to rely on and come to count on receive the services that they've come to rely on and come to count on. The elected officials come and go. Political politics change. Right now, it's politically popular for you to ask government employees to contribute more. But spending time looking into all the potential solutions and objectively speaking with all the stakeholders who are involved is going to take time and energy. But I guarantee you, taking time and energy to gather the information you need to make this decision is going to benefit not only the county employees, but the residents as well.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Please step forward.
Hi. I'm Courtney Guy, 9662 Blackman Road, Kingsley, Michigan. 49649. I just wanted to speak. A lot of the people here are speaking on behalf of the 11 or the 88. I wanted to speak on behalf of the lower end. I just started six months ago. I absolutely love working for the county. It has been one of my dreams my entire life. And I just want to also tell you another one of my dreams, and that was to own a home and to have children. And some of those dreams are not making a whole lot of sense when there are increased insurance costs and stagnant wages. So some things got to give there. I went to college, I educated myself, on economics, actually. And the economics of this situation is not making any sense. So again, I speak on behalf of all the other people that are not in that 88. And those are important people, very important people, critical people to the county, but so is everyone else. I do a critical job for the Health Department, a job that most people could not do. And so do every single one of our nursing staff. So does every single person. And I just think that you have to look at things a little more critically, just as much as we look at our jobs every single day because we do love being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment?
Speaking on behalf of the department, I would request that I have a few extra minutes.
I've given everyone extra time.
Thank you.
Sheriff Bensley, you will not be an exception.
Thank you very much. Tom Bensley, Grand Traverse County Sheriff. I'd like to make a couple of comments in regards to the two proposals before you this evening. As you know, I have shared my concerns with you and other groups about the vacancies and staffing issues that we have had at the sheriff's office. This has been a continual problem over the past three years and is currently affecting our office. For the past three years and currently, we are experiencing a 20% to 25% vacancy rate in our patrol deputies. These proposed changes most definitely will decrease our ability to attract, hire, train, and retain good, quality employees. As an example, two of our patrol officers recently applied for two vacant positions at the Traverse City Police Department. Yesterday, I spoke with one of those officers. I asked him why he applied. He immediately stated pay and benefits. He stated he likes working for the sheriff's office, a great department. It's provided him with lots of opportunities. However, he's looking out for the best interest of himself and his family. Adding to his reasons for applying for another job was the continued attempts by the county to, quote, "chip away at the salary and benefits package currently in place." This officer was hired in July of 2011 for one vacant position out of a pool of 160 applicants. Because of law enforcement jobs being more available statewide, our ability to attract good, quality candidates is diminishing, and we have no plans whatsoever in dumbing down our standards when hiring law enforcement officers. As a matter of fact, Mary Lenoir, in her report on unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities last month, stated, quote, "Whatever option the county chooses to pursue must balance these changes with its ability to attract quality candidates for open positions." Additionally, in December, Mr. Menzel was quoted when commenting on the difficulties in filling a nine-month open position for a human resources director, quote, "A number of candidates have been frightened away because of the county's reputation." Because no quality candidates applied for the human resources director position, the salary was increased by almost $20,000 in an attempt to attract quality candidates. That apparently has not worked. And now a firm has been hired at a cost of $10,000 to try and find a human resources director. I would surely welcome the opportunity to increase the salary of all our officers by $10,000 to be able to attract quality applicants. Somehow, I don't think that's going to happen. Historically, Grand Traverse County has negotiated with the union contracted employees, and those agreements would carry to the non-contract employees. That would seem to me to be a fair and equitable way of setting salaries, wages, and benefits for the non-contract employees. This practice may change. Non-union employees that have no representation and no ability to bargain or negotiate or arbitrate have their wages, salaries, and benefits dictated to them. This type of strategy only leads to more unionization of employees. These conditions are then put on the table as a requirement or demand for the unionized employees to fall in lockstep with those who had to take what was given to them. Good-faith bargaining and agreements made by this board and others in the past hold no weight. How does that help to attract and retain good, quality employees? Yes, there is a large debt that's owed to Michigan employees' retirement system and retiree healthcare obligations. Following up on Judge Rogers' comments that Grand Traverse County is not bankrupt, you will find in the report done by Mary Lenoir that the projected fund balance for the county's general fund at the end of 2016 will be 23%. Put that into context with the fact that a few years ago, the county Board of Commissioners reduced their minimum fund balance requirement from 18% to 15% so that they could use some additional money from the fund balance for the budget. Compare the county's estimated 23% fund balance with TCAP's reported fund balance of 5% to 6%, and I think it's safe to say it's fairly healthy. Additionally, the county's delinquent tax revolving fund has roughly $10 million, which is used to reimburse local units of government for delinquent taxes. Recently, $400,000 was taken from that fund and used for road repairs on La Fraina Road, clearly not a responsibility of the county's general fund budget. Much has been said about the county's contribution of $4.8 million to MERS in 2016, increasing to $8.8 million in 2028. That is a significant increase over 12 years. But in the following year, 2029, that payment is reduced by almost $8 million and continues at about $1 million for the next several years, and then increasing at a very modest rate. At that time, in 2028, according to the projections, the county's funded ratio will be at 80%. And in two years after that, will be funded at 95%. This definitely is an urgent situation, but not an emergency situation. Mr. Peacock, in his November 2015 budget forecast, information stated that the assumptions made in the forecast are subject to change and likely will. And when looking at numbers later than three to five years, assumptions could change materially. The projections of 2% increase of supplies, 5% increase in health, optical, and dental, and 2% in salaries and wages, stated by Mr. Peacock, I feel is a rather liberal projection. Additionally, the tax revenue projection of 2% per year with the local vibrant construction activity, I think, might be a little conservative. To his credit, Mr. Menzel is looking at many options for getting the county out of the financial problems we have all heard so much about. I would suggest getting them all on the table and then looking at what would be the best for Grand Traverse County and the citizens in Grand Traverse County who receive the services provided by the various departments and employees. The proposed changes before you this evening would not take effect until January 1st, 2017, eight months from now. Obviously, this is one option, but what about the others that have been discussed? I would submit to you that it may be a good idea to further explore, over the next several months, all of the options and then make a well-reasoned and well-informed decision on how to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment? Heidi.
Heidi Sheppi, East Duckload, Gron. I'm not going to rehash. Everybody has made well-thought-out points, and I agree. The one thing that I would like to offer is, I don't want to say a solution, but it is something to think about. With the health insurance plan, we have the two options. We have what we've always had, and then we have the less-expensive plan. With that less-expensive plan, the county is saving a significant amount of dollars. Instead of rolling that into the pension obligation, they could put that back to the employees who are actually getting the loss of that service. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else? Step forward, please.
Christopher Radu, 1328 Lonell and Terrace North. I'd also like to request, based on prior appearances and speaking on this matter numerous times, more than three minutes.
I've given everyone more than three minutes, Mr. Radu. I will not make an exception with you.
I appreciate that.
Chris, would you pull that mic closer to your face?
Sure.
Okay.
How's that?
Better.
Okay. I'd first off like to say that I'm very happy to see so many people here in the crowd. The last time that there were this many people here to address the issues that face this county were back in 2013, and it was over a pool closing, as opposed to worrying about what the long-term ramifications of the financial atrocities of the past were going to bring forward. But now that it's at our doorstep, everyone appears to be engaged. So that's great because coming here in the past and standing here alone was not a great place to be. I, however, want to offer a little support to the board at this point in time. And then I want to address some of the things that were said by prior people. I want to give the board a lot of credit for taking the initiative to cut themselves first before cutting others. And I'm specifically pointing to Ms. Kropas' proposal of not having wages or per diem starting next year. That is a great sign of leadership. It shows that you are willing to lead by example, which is something that was not part of prior boards that were elected or prior administrations or people that occupied positions that brought us to this point. There are some people that are sitting on this board that are now facing challenges. And that scares me because when I came here in 2013, what I saw was a board that wasn't willing to act and an administration that wasn't willing to act either. And I feared that we weren't going to come to a good solution. And we were within a heartbeat of making a very bad decision for the county. And for those of you who said that we're rushing this, you can go back to the tapes. This was going on back in 2013. Pension bonds were mentioned for Grand Traverse County. So by no means is this being right. Pension bonds were mentioned for Grand Travers County, so by no means is this being rushed. We spent almost three years doing nothing to address this issue. So some of the people that got up prior talked about how politics can change and it can be transitional. After the last election, I was really happy to see the way that the board changed, because you had people that were willing to take action and willing to make changes to try to make this solution better, as opposed to kicking the can down the road. And one of the gentlemen earlier referenced that, you know, it's, the board is transitional. Part of the reason why we're in the position we're in is because no one bothered to actually watch the people that were supposed to be putting this money aside. This pension plan was overfunded back in the 1980s. Its funding level has dropped for over a decade, so for everyone that was negotiating in good faith, you were, but the people you were negotiating with were not in good faith putting money aside for your benefit. That is where the anger should lie, not with the current board, not with the current administration, with the people that were here before, shaking your hand and promising you things and then not doing anything about it. And most of those people are gone, unfortunately, but the ones that stand before you are trying to confront this problem head-on and come up with a viable solution. Now, some of you at this point are probably looking at me and thinking, "This guy's completely against us." Well, let me say this. You can go back and again, look at the tape. I've presented numerous solutions that actually benefit both sides, and part of the reason for that is, is that my mother is a teacher who lives off of a government pension. I share your concern for honoring that agreement, very much so, which is why one of the things that I came before the board and suggested is that they look to privatize the obligation. And what that means is to take that pension obligation off of the books of the county and transfer it to a company like Prudential, or John Hancock, or Lincoln Financial, take your pick. This was done by General Motors after they exited bankruptcy. Their pensioners were given the majority of what they were promised because GM took that liability and transferred it to Prudential. That involves having to step away from MERS. Now, you have some people that are fighting that, and you have some people that are coming out and saying, "This isn't Detroit. We're not Detroit." Let me tell you something. Part of the reason why I came here-
Mr. Radu, I understand, and I hear your passion, but I would ask that you address the board rather than-
Sorry.
-rather than the audience.
Sorry. So-
Back to Detroit.
Back to Detroit. Detroit's pension wasn't as underfunded as this pension. The only reason why that is, is because they issued pension obligation bonds, which eventually put Detroit into bankruptcy. If we go down that road arbitrarily, issuing debt and paying for that and expecting MERS to hit an 8% return, we're going to end up in the same place as Detroit. And for people that are in the pensions, one of the things they should know is that there was a precedent set by federal law that superseded state law, which made it so that pensions were not untouchable. In Detroit, pensioners received a cut before bondholders lost everything, and they received that cut with the pension 80% funded. So for your representatives that you have, specifically in the judicial area, that are fighting, pulling away from MERS and fighting some of the things that you're trying to do, I would ask them to consider what their cuts are going to look like with a pension that's only 48% funded. It's probably going to be even worse. One of the reasons why I imagine you guys are here today to try to balance out and ask employees for so much is that we have a structural deficit, and the state constitution only allows for so much property tax increase on an annual basis. To my knowledge, and I'm stepping outside of this a little bit, I believe you have taken the maximum amount that you're allowed to increase for the prior three years. So you've done everything that you can, from a revenue raising standpoint, to align your deficit. In spite of that, you run a continuous structural deficit. So I understand why you're trying to go to this point and ask the employees for more. I come here again to encourage you once more to say, "I believe you should privatize this obligation, because once and for all, you could get it off your books, and then you'd know what that amount was." Some people earlier referenced a hybrid plan. You had a city representative that talked about how the city was in such better shape because their pension's 62% funded and they have a hybrid plan. But the stupidity of that statement is, is that they have an unfunded liability that continues to accumulate and is one that they couldn't begin to quantify, and their funding level's dropping at the same time. So if they get to 48%, which at their current rate, I think it's eight years they'd get there, if they get to 48% and they have a hybrid plan, they're going to be in even worse straits than you guys are, because their unfunded liability will continue to accumulate, and they're still not setting the money aside. Mr. Benzley talked about being able to attract good employees, and I think that's important. We need good people working in government. We need good people working at the county. But I do believe that he said in 2011, "We had 160 applicants apply for one job." So it looks like we're still getting a lot of people that want to come and live up here. When my mom moved up here with me as a teacher, she came from Whittamore Prescott. It was 70% welfare in Whittamore Prescott. In spite of that, she moved up here and took a 33% pay cut to teach at TCAPS, to bring a reading program here. And I can remember as a young child, her saying to me, "A view of the bay is worth a third of your pay." We make less money up here. Anybody that lives up here knows that. It's just a fact of life. The last thing I want to do is just address some of the things that Mr. Cooney said, if I may, and then I promise I'm done. I don't think that you're trying to take this out on the employees, and I certainly don't advocate taking it out on them, which is why I again say, "I am more than willing to offer assistance." There are some people that have taken advantage of that. I'm still happy to provide more of it. It's, you know, this isn't a rushed decision on your standpoint, and I guess the last thing I would say is, I don't look at it as the rug being pulled out from underneath people, because this problem's been compounding for a while, and so I hope that everyone that's here is inspired to continue to come here and help the community come up with ideas. The woman that spoke two times ago said, "People from the community, listen, some of us have been coming here trying to help and trying to offer solutions, and I would welcome anyone else's assistance in doing that." And again, thank you for all that you do. You certainly, those of you who have been here for the shortest period of time, you didn't create this problem, and that especially goes for the administration, and we're all very lucky to have people like you that are dedicated, that are looking for a solution to this problem, because it's not an easy one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make public comment? Going once? Going twice? Bringing it back to the board? All right. Mr. Menzel, would you like to address the resolution that you've proposed?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd be happy to do that. We have a resolution that would increase the contribution from 0% to 10% for non-union-defined benefit employees, excuse me, and a multiplier that would go into effect of 1.25 going forward. That's the basis of the motion, the resolution.
All right. Under our board rules, we usually require a motion before we have board discussion, and so I am going to make the motion, and I will read it. Whereas Grand Travers County's pension plan has been administered by the municipal employees' retirement system, MERS, since 1967, and whereas Grand Travers County offers a MERS-defined benefit plan to certain eligible participants employed prior to 2001, approximately 88 current employees and elected officials are eligible to participate in the Grand Travers County-sponsored MERS-defined benefit plan. This includes current union employees, non-union employees, and elected officials, and whereas, based on the most recent annual valuation reports, Grand Travers County's unfunded accrued liability for pension obligations was valued at $45.8 million. Grand Travers County's unfunded accrued liability for pension obligations is expected to grow to $51.2 million by the end of 2016. And whereas, the funded status of the Grand Travers County MERS-defined benefit plan is 48%, for purposes of comparison, the average funded status of all counties' MERS-defined benefit plans is 76%. And whereas, the funded status of the Grand Travers County MERS-defined benefit plan is the lowest of all counties in MERS, and whereas, absent changes in the Grand Travers County MERS-defined benefit plan, the current projected required employer contribution will increase from $4.8 million in 2016 to $8.8 million in 2026. And whereas, Grand Travers County has commissioned an expert to assess, report, and make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding possible and recommended steps to address the county's substantial unfunded pension and unfunded retiree healthcare liabilities, and whereas, the expert has made numerous recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, which may mitigate the growth of and/or marginally reduce Grand Travers County's unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities. And whereas, one of the preferred recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, which may mitigate the growth of and/or marginally reduce Grand Travers County's unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities, and whereas, on average, employees in other counties for years have been required to make significant employee contributions to their county's MERS-defined benefit pension plans. By contrast, only nine of Grand Travers County's currently active 88 MERS-defined benefit eligible employees/elected officials contribute to their pension, and even then, the contribution rates for the nine employees are only 0.67% and 2%, which is a fraction of the average employee contributions for other counties. And whereas, the county Board of Commissioners has the exclusive constitutional and statutory authority to fix and change, as permitted by law, the compensation for Grand Travers County officers and employees. And this is, I'm assuming that means Constitution Article VII?
Article VII, Section 9.
MCL 45.401, MCL 45.421, and MCL 46.11. And whereas, a number of the possible mechanisms which may be available to address the unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities as to certain units of Grand Travers County employees may not be subject to implementation until certain legal obligations are satisfied and/or until such time as possible current collective bargaining provisions expire. And whereas, as an initial step to begin to address these issues, the county has concluded that, while unfortunate, it is necessary to require and implement an immediate 10% contribution to the pension plan for those current non-union employees and elected officials eligible to participate in the Grand Travers County MERS-defined benefit pension plan. And whereas, this matter has been reviewed by the County Administrator's Office, Human Resources, Labor Council, and MERS, and now therefore be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners that effective the first full payroll period on or after January 1, 2017, current non-union employees and elected officials of Grand Travers County who are eligible to participate in the Grand Travers County MERS-defined benefit pension plan shall be required to contribute 10% to their pension plan. This resolution authorizes that such contributions be made through payroll deduction of the affected employees/elected officials. Be it further resolved that the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners hereby adopts the attached Plan Amendment for MERS Division 10 elected officials, MERS 11, MERS Division 11 general non-contract hourly, and MERS Division 18 general non-contract exempt, and authorizes and chairperson of the Board of Commissioners to execute such Plan Amendments. Be it further resolved that the Grand Travers County Clerk shall execute and forward to MERS such further and additional documents as MERS may require to effectuate the above-described 10% contribution requirement for all current non-union employees and elected officials of Grand Travers County eligible to participate in the Grand Travers County MERS-defined benefit pension plan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Would anyone like to discuss? Commissioner Crawford.
Okay. I had a lot of little notes. A lot of people said the things that I was going to say already, so thank you very much. I guess I want to start with a little example, to put it down in really, really simple terms. If I have a babysitter for my kids, because I work, and I pay her $300 a week to watch my children, and I have this huge credit card debt looming, she wasn't part of that, but it's this debt. I suppose one of the solutions would be to tell my babysitter that I'm only going to give her $250 a week, but I fully expect her to come every day and watch my children. And of course, another option is I could cancel my cable. I could work with the different things, the different services that I have coming into my home, and I can eat out less. There's also other things I could do. I could ask my babysitter, though, to take $250 instead of $300. I'm pretty sure she'll quit. So not only now, now I have no babysitter, I doubt that I could get another babysitter for $300. I probably would have to pay more. And so this is, this is how I see this. We're not looking at the ripple effect of what's going to probably happen here, and that is, many of these people, most of them, will go at the very first second they're allowed to go and retire. That means they're not contributing to the plan. That means they're drawing from the plan. I would like to know from MERS, if that scenario did happen, what happens to our liability? I'm not an actuary, but I tend to think it's going to go way up. Then we need to replace those people. These are people who have been here for so many years and are so valuable to us, and we need even ask them. We're not even asking the people that do the work for us to help us find solutions. And I think that that's something we're really overlooking a lot, is that we really need to ask. They are part of the solution, not the part of the solution that says, "Take less pay, a lot less pay, and keep coming to work every day and doing an awesome job." That's not the part of the solution that the employees are. I think that we haven't vetted this through. We have not come up with any new ideas. We haven't come up with, which I think the employees probably have, lots of, we have a lot of smart people that work for us that can come up with a lot of different ways that we might be able to tackle this. I don't want to lose these people, and, as I said, I think, I'm very impressed by the employees that came and talked today. I think that we have, we have such awesome employees, and to not ask them, to not have them help us to do this, I think is, is a very big mistake. And I really think that this is a mistake, to, to, to cut the pay of these people, almost forcing them to retire, to start drawing on these plans, to stop coming in and doing a good job every day. I just, the problem with, I think, with commissions that were before us was that they didn't look at the ripple effect far out. They just said, "We can't give you a raise, so we'll give you a multiplier." There's ripples way out there with this, and I think we've all talked about, for months, about we need to be more forward-looking than they have in the past. We need to see further out, and I really think that this is a time that we need to do that. We need to take the time to vet all of the options, to try to figure out the one single best option. And I really, I do not believe at all that this is the best option, or even a good one at all. So that's what I have to say for now.
You know, Commissioner Crawford, one thing you did mention was that these employees would leave and they would not be contributing to the plan. There are 79 of them who are not contributing anything now. We have over 400 defined contribution employees who are contributing to their pension plan, and I don't think that there's anything wrong to expect defined benefit employees to also contribute to their pension plan, but that's just me.
Correct.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I mean, one point I want to make is, I've said many times at meetings, "Bring us ideas." I've yet to get an email, even from you, on any ideas. We've got to do something. You talked about the committees in the past. That's the exact same thing. We can't do anything because we're scared to do anything because of the ripple effect. At some point, we have to stop the bleeding. I mean, yes, it sucks. I mean, there's no other way to put it, to have to affect pay, but we're going to have to do it. There's no, bring me ideas. I mean, if you have some other great ideas, let's close the pool. I'll make a motion tonight to close the pool. You won't be for that. MSU extension, let's shut that down. I doubt if you'd vote for that. I mean, we- I mean, we have other options, yes, we could do, other than affecting their pay. I would love to hear all that and love to vote on it, but this commission, I don't think would do it. We haven't made any tough decisions. The toughest decision we made so far was to cut our pay, and we, I mean, that was 4-3.
Dr. Lathrop?
I, um, I got elected on this stuff. I remember four years ago, when I first got elected, I was so green, but I knew that this huge debt was looming on us and everyone was just ignoring it, and it was like pulling teeth on the last board before this one, to get anything to happen. We had to move heaven and earth just to get people to realize it really is real. And a lot of us went through, I mean, these decisions aren't easy. I'm finding the best decisions I make hurt the most. They're tough to make. And I value our employees, but ladies and gentlemen, I have one employee. I don't have 500 employees. I have one employee, and that's Tom Menzel. I don't represent county workers, although I thank God for them. I don't represent them. I represent District 1. The majority of those people are fiscal conservatives and expect me to vote in a way that provides them the services they need at a price they can afford. So, out of desperation, we hire a known expert and a very successful person who comes out of retirement to help us out for a dollar a month, and he comes up with this, some of these ideas. By the way, to say that we're not looking at all the other ideas is ludicrous. I've sat in many meetings where we're talking about privatization, the combination plans. I mean, I've been in meetings, we've hammered it out for hours. This is just one of the many pieces of patchwork we've got to put together to keep this county solvent. So, when, I don't understand this nearly as much there as well as Mr. Menzel does. The last thing I'm going to do is to double-cross him. He and his staff have worked very hard to come up with ideas to save this county long-term, and I am going to support him on that. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to be one of those commissioners that doesn't have the guts to make a hard decision. So I know it hurts people. I will say this, when it comes to these things, in the private world that I'm in, I run a business, have for 40 years, all these benefits don't come to us. We have to do them privately. Anyway, I'm going to support Mr. Menzel on this. I have to because he's an expert, and we've hired him to do the job.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Historically, both governmental entities and private business were able to fund retirement programs for their employees solely on the entity itself. In today's world, it's pretty much unheard of that employees don't make some contribution to their pension liabilities. In my business, my employees, I put in 3%. My employees match that or whatever portion over and above that that they choose to. But the fact is, is in today's world, there are basically no pension programs that don't require an employee contribution. I understand that, and I realize that. Generally, that is considered portion, they are compensated by wages or something more to do that. When we come in and we say, "Okay, we're going to ask you to contribute 10%, oh, by the way, we haven't given you a raise in two or three years, but you're going to pay 10% of that, plus you're going to pay a percentage of your healthcare insurance with no additional compensation," that becomes a very difficult nut for anybody to swallow. I, like Carol and someone else mentioned, I think it was maybe Bob Cooney mentioned earlier, I'd like to see an actuarial from MERS as to what happens when these 88 people leave, what happens to our unfunded liability. My guess is it's going to go up significantly when these people leave and those units are no longer contributing any money. Those people that are still on defined benefit here, the county is still contributing money into that defined benefit pool as long as they are still working. The minute they leave, we stop contributing into that pool, and therefore, there's no extra funds going into there for that. So, that unfunded liability continues to get worse. I have two daughters who are fortunate enough to work for state-owned universities. Both of them are mandated by their contracts to contribute 6% to their state-run retirement program. It's part of their contract. They want the job, they have to contribute 6% of their salary to the pension liability. I don't think we've looked at options for pensions, and I'm sure we haven't looked at different options for healthcare. We've talked about in one of the emails this week about the possibility of going to an HSA-type plan. I recently changed the health insurance plan that was offered to my employees to an HSA plan. I found that I could go to an HSA plan with a higher deductible. I was able to fund their deductibles through a contribution to their HSA accounts and still save significant money at the end of the year. If I can do that with eight employees on that plan, can you imagine the savings that can come to Grand Travers County with 500 employees? You know, there's just a huge thing. My biggest problem with this whole discussion is MERS is taking no responsibility. MERS encouraged Grand Travers County very actively to eliminate the defined benefit programs, put all of our employees on defined contributions. They sent people here time after time to meet with all of the employees individually to get them to switch over to the defined benefit or defined contribution. MERS guaranteed Grand Travers County that you're going to get 8% return on your money. Last year, they managed our money. We paid them $93,000 to manage our money last year. Instead of getting the 7.75% that they guaranteed us according to their projections and their actuarials, we got 2.6. You know, we've got a company that's managing our funds that, you know, they're saying, "You need $45 million," but the fact is, they're still holding $67 million of our money, and they're investing it for us. Last year, they lost a half a million dollars for us, you know. So, what, MERS is accepting no responsibility for this whatsoever, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we need to get out of MERS as fast as we can, as soon as we can.
Yes, absolutely positive.
But the fact is, that's not easy. That's not easy to do. We had a discussion with MERS about an exit strategy. Well, you know, there's going to be administrative fees and this and that, and I said, "As far as I'm concerned, that's bullshit." I could take my money out of Traverse City Bank today and move it over to Chase Bank, and I don't pay Traverse City State Bank any fee to give me my money. It's my money. They're holding it. I'm paying them annually an administrative fee to administer our funds. They are not doing their job. Grand Travers County, every year, they do an actuarial. They tell Grand Travers County, "Your contribution to the MERS fund this month or this year is X number of dollars." Every single year, Grand Travers County has made that payment, but we've continued to be farther and farther in the hole. Three years, we asked them for a freeze, and we got that freeze. First, that came after two years in a row of the state tax tribunal cutting $750,000 from Grand Travers County. We lost a million and a half dollars by rulings by the state tax tribunal in two years in a row, and that's why we asked for the three-year freeze, and we're granted that. But still, we made the payment that they told us we had to make, and we continued to go backwards. As far as I'm concerned, this pension liability, you know, we probably should have been more active. We should have tracked it closer as to whether or not they were doing their part of the job, but the bottom line, at least in my opinion, MERS did not do their job.
Would anyone else like to comment before I take a vote? Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, I agree that MERS holds a lot of responsibility, but we also, the county, holds a lot of that too, because, I mean, the fact that we're dead last in the MERS system tells me that everybody else at least did something a lot better than we did. I think you hit the nail on the head with looking at it closer. I mean, granted, at the time, I don't think, you know, it was a footnote in the accounting. And going back, you know, you got different things. You have the closing of the systems and all this stuff, all affected it, but at this point, we've got what we've got, and we do have to do something moving forward. I mean, I'm all for looking at every, if we can privatize it, what's it going to cost us? You know, that's my big concern. I definitely think MERS needs to get on the bandwagon and get down to about a 6% return to make it, you know, at least somewhat meaningful, but...
Commissioner Crawford?
I am very glad to see your excitement at Sunny's.
Leaving MERS?
Yes, because I would be all over that.
I have wanted to do that.
I would be all over pulling all the money out. If your investment, people aren't doing what they're supposed to with your money, take it out and do something else. They haven't done us any favors. They haven't, they've, we've followed their advice and everything has skyrocketed every time.
They have been enabling.
Absolutely. And then, and they've got our money, and they think that means they've got us, but they don't. We can do something else with it. I would advocate for that all day long. Get out of it and do something else with it, please.
Commissioner Kropka?
Well, instead of just talking about things I decided to learn and actually act on it, so I was in a meeting with MERS, along with Commissioner Lathrop, about withdrawing from MERS, I don't think Tony enjoyed the discussion very much with me. It ended with me telling him that our marriage was okay and that each of us are just different people and it's probably time that we divorce. And he didn't disagree with me, but just talking about leaving MERS is not as easy as just saying, "I want to leave MERS." There's a lot more to it.
I know, there is.
There's two possible ideas. To think that we're short-sighted this and we haven't spent months of our lives on this is really not doing us justice to the seriousness that we have with this job. And Dr. Johnson is correct. Every time we come up with something, the room fills up with people. You can't get rid of the animal control. You can't get rid of the pool. You can't combine the register of deeds and clerk's. You can't close the pool. You can't lease out the pool. I tried to sell Power Island. Remember that one? That was a good one. I tried to lease Twin Lakes to a veterans rehab group. I mean, you name it, I have tried to do it. Not only that, I've been meeting in Lansing to have a tourist tax implemented in Grand Travers County to start having some of the visitors shoulder the burden of the services that we provide by Grand Travers County. This is not, and this is not, we're quickly doing this. So I've done everything I could to learn about pensions. Interestingly enough, the Teamsters Central State Pension is a great thing to learn about if you haven't learned about it yet. That's a pension organization of 37 states, 400,000 Teamsters. And guess what? They're losing their benefits. On September 25th, 2015, the Teamsters Pension Fund filed an application with the U.S. Department of Treasury seeking approval for a pension rescue plan under the Multi-Employment Pension Reform Act to ensure that the fund will continue to provide some benefit pensions. These employees who worked as Teamsters, some of them 20, 30, 40 years, they're all elderly now, not able to go out and start a new career, their pensions are being slashed by 50%. The average of them were earning $3,200 a month in their pension. They're now going to be earning about $1,500, and all of us know how devastating that is on a budget like that. So what we're trying to do is not be the Central States Pension Fund. That's number one, the intentions. There's two ideas that we can do that I've narrowed down in meeting with people. I did spend the day with an independent financial advisor going over every possible thing that I could think of, because, again, this is not my skill set, but what I am, have a skill set in is research, so I've been researching a lot. There's two options. The first one is privatizing, pulling out of MERS and creating a pension board. The timeline for that is a year. This is not an overnight thing. We aren't pulling the rug out from anybody. This is something where we would take our funds, move them to a private entity, and start dealing with the ramifications of that, and there are ramifications. The second thing that we can do is close all of our defined benefit programs that are currently here, the people that are currently on the defined benefit programs. We can close that. We can bond out for it. We can take the savings from the bonds, which is about $600 and some odd thousand dollars a year, buy out those employees with a cash payment, and we can start all over again. That process takes about a year. We're not talking about pulling the rug out from anybody, but we are talking about being a little bit more forward-thinking than we've been in the past. I have a lot of thoughts about the healthcare and premiums one, but we'll save that for later, but as far as the pensions go, what we're all worried about is the amortization schedule that has been accelerated. That's the one you hear about where it's 4.4 to 8.8. Those are scary numbers. And everybody knows, even if we were to balance our budget to the penny, we still then start the next year in a structural deficit because our premiums are being accelerated. So, Tom, to his benefit, I mean, really, he has met over and over again with MERS, and trust me, this is not a fun thing to do. I mean, if I'm threatening divorce on one of them, it's not a great thing to do. But Tom has gone over and over again to try to slow down this amortization schedule. It's not the be-all, end-all. It's not a magic wand, but it does help us. And the one repetitive theme that Tom and all of us hear from MERS, those of us on the commission that have taken the time to talk to MERS, and not everybody has, but those of us that have talked to MERS, we hear over and over again, "You have to make some kind of change in order to have them consider the amortization schedule." Now, that frustrates me. It's like holding something over your head, but regardless, that's the story we're getting. So then I started asking our MERS representative, "You must make some money, right? I mean, you make some money. Like, somebody's making some money on this." And he said, "No, we're a not-for-profit." And I'm like, "Oh, wait a minute here." And he goes, "No, we're a not-for-profit. We were started by the state of Michigan," gave me the whole history of MERS and all the stuff I didn't know. And once again, I said, "You must be making some money." And he said, "No, we're not, you know, we're a not-for-profit." And I thought, "Why in the hell would I give my money to invest to somebody that isn't making some money too?" This is, it's a backwards kind of thinking that started when we entered in with MERS in the 1960s. So I don't think that there's any of us that aren't considering the leaving of MERS, the privatization, perhaps the bonding, however you want to talk about it, there's several different options. But I think that I felt a general consensus from this audience that people thought that we hadn't considered these options. We haven't been meeting with people. We haven't been going to meetings, and we haven't been talking to people. And I wanted you to know that I at least can speak for myself and Commissioner Lathrop and Commissioner Max Bauer that we have, and we are looking at all different kinds of options, and this is not short-sighted, this is not quick, and honest to goodness, if one time we could get one thing closed or changed, but we can't because the commission cannot agree on making any cuts. So therefore, the cuts are going to be generalized across the board, 10% contribution raises in healthcare. If any of you want to come to the meetings and represent the employees when we're trying to make changes like close the pool or eliminate animal control or combine the register of deeds in the clerk's office, that would be great, but we haven't seen anybody, as Mr. Reddoo mentioned. He's the one face I remember over and over again that's at least come forward. He might not agree with his ideas, but at least he's giving ideas. Any of you are welcome to, and I want to make sure you always know. And I was sad to hear somebody say they weren't asked, and I take that to heart, and I'm sorry that I didn't reach out and ask anybody, but I want you to know right now, you can always reach out to us. There's, this is a two-way street, so, you know, as far as a 10% contribution by 11 employees, I think it's a reasonable resolution, but I just want you to know that this isn't a decision in a vacuum. It's part of an overall plan to not only attack MERS at one side by a decrease in the amortization schedule, we're going to attack them on the other side by offering pulling out to privatization. Then we'll see what happens. You know, holding that over their heads left us with one option. They kept pushing the hybrid. You've got to do the hybrid. You've got to do the hybrid. And it's kind of like going to a car salesman, and you have your heart set on the Chevy, and before you know it, he's pushing the BMW. And you're thinking out there, you know, sure enough, he's going to get some kind of commission, extra commission on the car. So I'm concerned about the hybrid just because of, MERS did not want to talk to us about changing- changing the amortization chart until we accepted a hybrid. Then all of a sudden, the amortization chart was up for discussion. That concerned me right there. So there's a lot of red flags, but there was a lot of thought, a lot of effort, a lot of time put into these resolutions. And, you know, again, the healthcare one will be a different discussion, but for this one, I want you to know that this came out of a whole series of negotiations, and this one resolution's change could put us on the track for that decrease in amortization. Once we do that, we're out of a continued structural deficit. And that's what I think we're all really concerned about, is that, that right, the cash-on-hand general fund structural deficit. The rest will come as we make changes.
Dr. Lathrop?
I respectfully disagree with Commissioner Wheelock in some respects. Yes, MERS has not been our best friend. However, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know, when you pay the lowest amount on your credit card, it doesn't always pay off the credit card. And we had good financial minds who kept track of all these figures, they're reliable numbers, we've looked back at them. It was obvious for 20 years that we weren't paying enough into MERS to make it float. Yes, we paid what they said, just like the credit card company says, "You don't have to pay this much," but they get a lot more interest in the end. I remember the days when the credit card was against, it was legal to pay the minimum amount, and you'd never get it paid off. So that's kind of like we're at with MERS. Just because they said we could pay a minimal amount, and we pay that, and then we say, "Okay, we should be funded now." We knew better than that, at least, it was obvious to me when I got on the board, but I couldn't get anyone to admit it. So now we've got a board that admits it. So I, they're not our best friend, I do think we should go somewhere else, I agree with you on that, but I think past boards and past administrators bear a lot of the burden of responsibility for this. I don't want to just say, "Oh, MERS is the culprit, we're the culprit too." So I want to make that clear.
Commissioner Klaus?
When I ran for this board, I had no idea that we were going to be making these kind of decisions. Decision based on somebody's paycheck at the end of the week isn't an easy decision for me to make. Although I look back on my tax-paying career, and having paid hundreds of thousands of dollars into this county, to find that we're in this shape, sickens me, and I'm sure it sickens a lot of people. We shouldn't be sitting here, being forced to make these decisions, based on what's happened in the past, but we are. My retirement is 100% self-funded, or was, until I had to liquidate it to keep what I wanted to keep. I understand tough times, and it's going to be tough times for the county, it's not going to be easy, and I won't be sitting up here with a smile on my face, voting for this and supporting our administrator. It's just a sick spot that we're forced to be in. Thank you.
Okay, I am going, I'm sorry, Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, it's just horrendous, really, I mean, you know, unfortunately, some of us did know that we were going to have to make these tough decisions. What I'm hoping that, if this motion does pass, that this will make this board then look to at, what can we do in the future? We may be able to lighten this, we may be able to come back before the end of the year and say, "Look, we don't need a full 10%. We've made other cuts somewhere, we're able to extend it." You know, I think you have, like I said, you have to start somewhere, and this is the first step. And I hope that, you know, either way, that whether this passes or doesn't pass, that we continue to look at what are our other options to move forward on this, because this is, again, just the start of things that we need to do.
Okay, I am going to support this motion, because we have over 400 employees who pay into their pension program. We have 79 who do not, and that just flat isn't fair. We pay more for the 88 employees on the defined benefit program than we do for the other We are where we are. I agree with Dr. Johnson, that if we can lighten this, we certainly are going to before the end of the year. But right now, I'm going to call the motion, and Bonnie, if you would, do a roll call, please.
Crawford?
No.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
No.
Kropke?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes, motion passes. Next on the agenda, the insurance premiums?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is based on 2011 legislation, PA Act 152, that allows an entity to level off its co-pays and insurance as long as they're run consistently across the board. I've worked with our labor attorney on this, and this has to be done at a 20% rate across the board. You know, if I'd had more time, three years ago, was here or something, I would have tried not to go this way and do 10, 15, 20, just, you know, level it in to make it a little easier, but I have no option now. I have to do the 20%. It crosses every employee, union and non-union. It will save us around 625,000 approximately in this next year's budget, and combined with the previous action, we're looking at about 700 and some thousand dollar savings with these two actions.
Is that per year?
Yes.
Per year?
Yes.
All right, I will make the motion, and I'm going to read the resolution for everyone. Whereas 2011 PA 152 provides for limitations on the amount that public employers may contribute toward the annual cost of medical benefit plans that cover their employees, and whereas the 2017 coverage year for Grand Traverse County health plans commences January 1, 2017, and whereas employee medical benefit plan costs borne by Grand Traverse County have increased and continue to increase exponentially, exponentially. And whereas, in an effort to mitigate the effect on employees, Grand Traverse County is in the process of proposing and offering to employees an additional healthcare plan option effective January 1, 2017, which will have a lower cost. And whereas, Grand Traverse County has endeavored and will continue to endeavor to work together in a cooperative manner to undertake changes necessary to reduce costs of the county's healthcare plans, and now therefore be it resolved by this Board of Commissioners that Grand Traverse County adopts the 80/20 cost-sharing model, whereby the county's cost will be limited to no more than 80% of the total premium costs in order to comply with the requirement of 201 PA 152 for health plan coverage year commencing January 1, 2017. Employees will contribute 20% of the total premium costs. Be it further resolved that Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners authorizes the county to offer to eligible employees the alternative HMO/HAS plan, a summary of which is attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, for the health plan coverage year commencing January 1, 2017, subject to any notice and/or bargaining obligations. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Crawford. Discussion. Commissioner Wheelock?
Now, PA 152 is very clear in that it reads that the county can only pay 80% of the healthcare premium, you know. The only thing that I'm going to say is, I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that the healthcare premium is as low as it could possibly be. You know, like I said earlier, you know, I recently made a major overhaul of my coverage for my employees, but that came with a significant savings to my company also. And I can, I could see where the county can save, save county money and save employee money. One of the things that has always been amazing to me is what our usage rate is, the number of employees and the amount of monies that are paid out per employee by the insurance company. It is way over any local, national, or state average of the benefits that are paid out by the insurance company for our employees. And I have no reason why that is. So, you know, if anyone has any idea why our employees are using health insurance benefits way more than the average citizen of this community, I'd be more than happy to hear it, because it doesn't make any sense to me. But, you know, all I can say, I will support this as long as we have a commitment that we're going to look at other alternative insurance coverages that employees have. You know, we have a very diverse group of employees, you know. I'm fortunate in my business, I have a lot of young guys that are single, so their usage of their benefits is lower, and thereby their premiums are lower. So it's easier to deal with. Although with the Affordable Healthcare Act, all health insurance now is graded based on the employee's age. Doesn't make any difference about their health condition or anything else, it's 100% based on an individual member who is insured on their age. And that includes everything from the guy that works to me, for his wife, and his three children. Each of their ages puts them in what the premium share is for that month. So, you know, we just, I just want to stress to our employees that we will search to find lower-cost alternatives for health insurance that still meets everyone's needs.
Commissioner Crawford?
I'm going to support this, because I think that it brings a more realistic package. This is what people in the private sector pay. And I like the fact that we are also offering, at the same time, a less, a different benefit package for less money. My husband and I go through this every single year, when it, in November, they send us what's going to happen, and just to keep the payments the same, to keep what's taken out of his paycheck every other week the same, our healthcare plan has deteriorated. That's just, that's the way it is. And these are decisions that all of us personally have to make every time it comes up. I think that this brings the employee contribution much more in line with the private sector. And I love this, $600,000 a year, that's awesome, that is well worth, and it is, it is across the board, it is everybody, so I like this.
Dr. Johnson? And then Commissioner Kropke?
You know, when I first heard this, one of my concerns was, what do we do with existing contracts? And then I started researching this Public Act 152, and then some other legal rulings on it, and I know, whatever we do, either way, we're going to be fighting this, obviously, because it goes both ways. But what struck me, when I read this Public Act 152, we actually have three options. You do the 80/20, you do a hard cap, or by a two-thirds vote, you say, "You're not going to live by this rule." When we, I know, I think we only voted, we approved, what, two or three contracts when we came in office. Not once was it ever told to me that, you know, by this public act, you could go back in and renegotiate and say, "No, we're going to do 80/20." Not once. And I don't think, I don't know if the previous board was told that either.
Never.
I mean, this has been since 2011.
Yeah.
To me, it still shows why we're in the situation we're in, is because of poor management. And I know, I'm trying to withhold blaming anybody, but when you look at this kind of issue, and it's a simple issue, it's right here in the law. You know, that is why we're here, that's why we're in this position. I mean, it's horrible, and we just had to do what we just did. This is a little easier, healthcare, everybody's, healthcare's gone up, but it's still, to me, just mind-blowing that we're even at this position, that no one has ever, in the two years I've been here, year and a half or whatever.
Until now.
Ever even mentioned, I've heard of Public Act 152, and I take blame too for not researching it then, but all I've heard of the Public Act was about at the end of a contract, if it had gone, if it was at the end and not in renegotiation, and that was specifically for that time period. So again, today, as I was researching more and more, I was actually getting more angry about that part of more information that was withheld from a board.
Anyone else? Commissioner Kropke?
I've been doing a lot of work on healthcare coverage, and I guess I'm a little surprised that the two commissioners that voted against 11 people contributing to their pension, like the rest of our employees, are so automatically supportive of this, because unlike that pension one, this is unfair, because 10% to a person making $30,000 is a lot different than 10% to a person making $100,000. And that's okay, because it's an equal percentage, but healthcare is not that way. It's not 20% of your pay that you're contributing, it's 20% of the premium, and whether you're making $150,000 a year at the county, or $15,000 a year at the county, you're going to pay the same exact premiums that are on here. So I've been doing a bunch of math and trying to figure this out, because first of all, I will say that this isn't comparable to the private sector, I think we all acknowledge that. But it is a substantial increase in healthcare premiums to families that make under $30,000, and that's the number that I picked, was 30,000. It's arbitrary, I understand that, I think it's roughly $16 an hour, and I acknowledge fully that we have many employees that make less than that. First of all, I do need to correct one thing though, Carol, the tax rate is 16.9% for somebody making $27,000. Now, I know that that's arbitrary, but it matters, because it affects how you are eligible for the Affordable Care Act. And that's where I think we have an answer here. What I would propose the county does is go ahead and pass this, but this is how we would make it a little bit more whole to those that are on the lower end of the income scale. We could take advantage of the federal government, oh boy, Obamacare, to, which is a very good choice for people of lower income. Those that are middle-income, not so much, but those that are on the lower end. So let's take our employees that make less than $30,000, let's say the ones that make $13, $14 an hour. Now, if, right now, we have a payment in lieu of insurance for $2,000. I suggest that we double that to $4,000. There's several reasons why this would work. Number one, many people are married, yet they take the insurance through the county, because, honest to goodness, we have great insurance, we really do. So their husband or whatever might have insurance, and they could take that. Now, number one, that would get less people out of our rolls, Commissioner Wheelock is 100% correct, we have an abnormally high usage of insurance in Grand Traverse County. I can tell you why, excellent insurance. So, first of all, we would have people that would leave the plan, that would simply go to their spouses, their families don't hurt at all, and not only that, they get a check for $4,000. You can do what you want with it. Then we have the people that don't have that option, their spouses are either uninsured, or they don't have a spouse, which is many of us, we don't have that option to go to a spouse for insurance. So, if you were to take that $4,000 and go to the Affordable Care Act, I entered in my age, I'm 43, I'm middle-aged, so I figured I'm right in the middle of the average age of an employee at the county, I would cover the middle of the 20 to the 60-year-olds. I entered in my age, I entered in $30,000 for my income, and I entered in my family, I'm fortunate. And the bronze plan is $197 a month, now that equates to a little less than $2,400 a month, and you could have those extra dollars to use as you need, or even better, if it was me, I would start a health savings account, because it's a better choice. So if we were to do this, I just threw out a couple of numbers, let's just say we could get 100 people to either switch to their spouse's insurance, or use the Affordable Care Act to take their dollars and go there. And again, remember, you get tax credits that will help you be eligible for things in the ACA that some people might not be in other brackets. So if we paid out $4,000 in lieu of insurance, that would be a total of $400,000 in costs going out to our employees. Right now, for, and I'm going to use the highest dollar amount possible, every single one of those 100 people were on the family plan, and we all know that that's not true, but let's just say they were. That plan costs Grand Traverse County $1.472 million a year. Therefore, we net $1.02 million, $1.072 million. $1.472 million a year. Therefore, we net $1.02 million, $1.072 million a year in savings from this plan. Those dollars go towards a pension day. I don't care what it goes towards. It goes towards something. These are not earmarked dollars. And on top of it, we would lower our excessive use of the insurance. So, therefore, in another year or two, our premiums are going to lower. We're going to have a much better situation. What we need to do is create a classification of healthcare shoppers in this community. Once we do that, we can start lowering our premiums and offering better things. And on top of that, for those families whose spouses have insurance, they just got a $4,000 bonus for the year by not taking the insurance. I think it's one option that we can look at. And I never thought I'd be so gung-ho on the Affordable Care Act, but I think I've read about 100 things about it lately. That is absolutely an option that we can talk about, is raising the in lieu of payments. I will support the motion tonight, but I'm not going to give up on ideas like this and keep doing this math. I know that there's a solution out there. Unfortunately, because of our county's high use of the insurance, it's very hard for us to shop for a lowered premium this year. But imagine the difference if just 100 people, 100 plans were off of that. And that would be savings for many families who are just taking that $4,000 and doing something with it. Now, when you couple that with the fact that we're offering an HSA option for employees, and they can contribute anything that they want to it, you don't, you don't, I mean, there's no cap on that. You can contribute as much as you want to it.
There is a cap.
There is a cap?
There is a cap by $3,000.
Okay, $3,000 per person. So, if you're a family, like mine, that would be $15,000 a year that I could contribute to that HSA. And those, of course, we all know the benefit of the HSA and the post-tax. So, these are ideas that we can come up with. This wasn't, again, a quick pulled-out-from-under-the-rug thing. I've been working on these things for a long time. There are many options. But when we make these initiatives that Mr. Menzel has brought before the board, these that we can do at the exact same time to lower our amortization schedule, which is number one, to tackle our structural deficit, couple it with these ideas, and we have time. That's why we're doing this now and not six months from now, when the change is going to affect everybody in a month's pay time. That's why we're doing this now. There's time for ideas to come forward. You know, this is not a brick wall when these resolutions are passed. This is where we can go to MERS, say we've made these changes, we're moving forward, and every single one of you have the option to be a part of the solution. Nothing is set in stone till January 1, and honestly, it's not set in stone until then. So, I would like to ask, and I will continue to work with Ms. DeHaan, on the idea of changing our payment in lieu of insurance. I think there is something to be said there. And honestly, if we could net $1 million in savings, every single person continues to be insured, and many of our employees have a $4,000 check, which wouldn't be bad either. I think that that is a potential benefit. And it also allows us to make these substantial structural changes that MERS is looking for in the overall amortization thing. So, I will continue to, I will support this, but I just want to say that this is, again, a process that we're going through together. It is not the end of it tonight.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I mean, tagging on to that, I mean, you could actually even structure that $4,000 into an HSA and probably not have to pay taxes on it. You know, there's a lot of options there that can be looked at. I mean, the one thing, you know, is we, if we go to the 20% cost share for everyone here, it is to the county's benefit to get as cheap as we can too, because of our 80%. So, I think in years past, there were not many options, but I, you know, I know already, there's several options, and I believe we'll look at other things down the road to make that even easier, so.
Anyone else?
I just have one comment.
Mr. Menzel?
This was just slight correction on Commissioner Kropa's, an article I read not too long ago in the Wall Street Journal, with the actuarial tables changing, those who are in their 40s are not considered middle-aged. You are still considered very young. Middle age doesn't hit till 50.
Oh, great.
The bad news is, being in my 70s, I was considered a senior citizen, which I didn't like to hear, but you're all okay.
There was a picture of a dinosaur next to your age group.
You're still in good shape. You're not, you're not middle-aged yet. You've got another seven or eight or nine years.
Well, this is excellent news for me, and I needed some good news this week, and I will take that ball and run with it.
That's the new.
But I do think that that dollar amount, I quoted roughly 200, is representative of the middle-of-the-road age group, because as you pointed out, Affordable Healthcare Act is based on age.
Just remember, the new criteria for middle age is 50.
50, okay.
So, you've got a lot of time to go.
I'm giving good.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Two things. One, in regard to the previous vote. If the proposal had been 5%, I would have supported it, but I could not support it at that. Tom and I talked about that earlier in the day. The other thing is, when you talk about the payment in lieu, if we can figure out some way to do that, whether it's a contribution to an HSA or something like that, I'm all in favor of that. We've talked about raising that number for a long time, because the insurance premium was costing us a whole lot more than the $2,000 we were offering payment in lieu. Also, the way that we have historically done the payment in lieu, and Commissioner Max Bauer and I have both been in this, had this discussion, that $2,000 payment in lieu of taxes, they run it through payroll. The check that I get is for $1,648.
Yeah.
And not only that, but the county is responsible to match the FICA and the federal and the state withholding on that amount of money. So, it truly costs the county probably, you know, $2,700 for me to get $1,600.
Yeah.
So, there are, there are ways to look at that, doing it differently, and I hope that we're, you know, continuing to look at different options.
Bonnie, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call, please.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Kropa?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes. Motion carries. This is our second opportunity for public comment.
I don't think so.
Mr. Porter?
Thank you, John Porter. I sent you an email. I don't know if the commissioners have received it. I sent a separate one to the clerk. It's called, title of it was, "One Community Concept." And I think you're pretty, felt pretty alone up there. I appreciate the work you did tonight, but this is, you've got townships, you've got city, you've got county. Many of them are all duplicate businesses. A lot of resources are duplicated. And for years, I've felt that this needs to be looked at, and restructuring of the community, make better use of these resources. And I've created a series of videos that I just write, you know, speak out what I'm thinking and get the resources of information from people that know more than I do. And I went to Battle Creek and did a field trip in 2010 on this. So, there's a lot of information there. One thing that I'd like, I'd ask you to do is just take a look at it, talk about it if you can, whether you agree or not. I hope you don't just say, "Can't be done. We can't restructure." Because I've heard that, and that is the most disempowering thing, to say, "We can't do it. The politicians won't let us do it. The people don't want us to do it. The townships don't want us to do it. The county doesn't want to do it. The city doesn't want to do it. No one I like the best." It's against the state law. If you want to be one community and act as one community and get the savings and efficiencies of being one community, and be stronger, take a look at it. But please, even if you disagree with it, don't say, "You can't do it," or, "It's a good idea, but you can't do it because blah, blah, blah." That's very disempowering. I would encourage you to say, "It's a good idea. There's a lot of things that need to happen before we can do it." That's an empowering statement. But to say, "It's a good idea, but we can't do it," that's very disempowering. And I would urge you to look at that information and take what's worthwhile and disregard the rest. But please don't just say, "Can't do it." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Anyone else? All right. We are adjourned.